Yeah, that's what I was doing too. I got this one.
I got one.
Yours is coming. Okay.
You want to double there?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, it's about five minutes after three. We'll go ahead and call our work session meeting order. With that being said, well, is Chamber first on the list today?
Chamber can be first on the list.
Okay.
If he would like to.
Larry, you want to go ahead and? And present?
And he laid some information for everyone. There she is.
That's, that is.
Okay. Yeah, I think turn the power on.
Yeah, hit your button.
There you go.
The one that says power.
Yeah, that's that one.
Hello, I appreciate the opportunity to come and just go over some of the chamber functions um before during this work session. Um, there's been a little bit of uh things going on and I thought it would be good to give an update. Um, I try to do this at least every six months, if not more often. Um, don't want to bore you. Um, those of you that got the budget packet, you would, you might recognize this one sheet that I gave you all. It's basically a front and back of uh all the things that chamber activities, marketing programs, services that we offer. Um, but something I've got new is you'll see is a, it's a stapled document, three pages. And uh what it is, is what, basically what we've been working on for the last year and a half. Most of this is my time on the Chamber Board. So I wanted you all just to kind of get an update, so you see what you're getting for your money. So first off, I'm just real quick gonna read our mission. I, I promise you I won't read this entire document, y'all know how to read. But uh our mission, the Allegheny Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to building a stronger, more vibrant community by supporting local businesses, promoting tourism, encouraging education, and fostering partnerships that improve life for everyone in our county. I, I was talking to Patrick Woody here a while back at the Earl Summit. Um, who had my job originally. And I was talking about the formation of the Chamber and everything. And he said, basically, it was uh the small businesses come together to kind of form a, a, an organization that would help promote the county and help promote the small businesses in the county, and also help improve the quality of life for the community. Um, obviously, if you have a thriving flourishing community of small businesses, then the community itself is going to flourish. So we want to continue that mission. Uh, you know, I didn't have Chamber experience before I came here. My background is totally publishing and marketing. And so when they hired me, I, you know, I was up front, I said, I'm not sure I know what I'm doing. And they said, well, if you can help promote the county and the town, then you'll be doing your business. Um, but I've also learned that there's a whole lot of connecting, it has to go on connecting one organization with another. And so I try to be as involved as I can in the community and organizations that are kind of the foundation of the community. And so there's, this list gets a little bit long. And sometimes I was telling David earlier, I, sometimes I think I've bit off more than I can chew. But it's worth it. And uh so let's just hit a few spots of what's gone the last year and a half. Um, the first thing on the, the item of the list is really what's most visible to most people is that uh we operate Allegheny Sparta Visitor's Center. We have two and a half employees and uh Beth Phillips is our half employee. She's a, she works three days a week typically. The visitor center is open six days a week this time of year. And uh we're the first thing that a lot of people that come into their area meet. For good or bad. They ask us directions, where's a good restaurant, um is it a good place to live? I, I, I'd say probably at least twenty-five to thirty percent of the people who come through the door are looking to buy. They're either looking to buy real estate, looking to buy land, or homes, and, and they want to know what kind of place they're getting into. So we have a ton of literature. I'm sure if you've been in the visitor's center, you've seen all the literature. Most of that literature is provided to us by our small businesses or the organizations that we represent. Um, the next thing on, on the list is just uh some of the annual events that uh the Chamber oversees. We handle the Fourth of July and the Christmas parades, the trunk and treat uh event. We, we responsible for managing those signups, the volunteers, the signage, the day of logistics, working hand in hand with uh any other organizations that might be involved. Like we work with the police force. Um, we work with the town. We work with a lot of volunteers to accomplish what basically is an unpaid. You know, nobody's paying for this. Nobody pays to register to be in the event. And we don't receive any income. Actually, it's a, it's something that we give back to the community. We have, you know, costs for equipment and signage and things like that. We don't charge for any of that. The next thing is our biggest event of the year, the Blue Ridge Mountain Heritage Festival. Last year was our record year for that. As far back as, as we've gone, it started as just a small, about a thousand to two thousand attended event with a little bit of music and some crafts. And we were packed out this past year. Um, Geo Fencing Software has said that we had five point six thousand in attendance last year. And I attribute that for, to, to two things really. An act of God, and we had good weather, and our marketing promotional efforts. So i- in the, the festival is just really popular. We get a lot of good, just a word of mouth advertising as well. We have rebranded it this coming year for, to be the Blue Ridge Mountain Heritage Festival. There is not another one of its kind, so we might as well be more specific that it's here in the Blue Ridge Mountains. Another thing that's really important to the community is Allegheny Sparta Visitors Guide. And it's, if you've seen it, it's about a seventy-five page document that has all member businesses. There's a lot of information about the community. You know, the town, where's a good place to eat, everything's in there. That is, w- we have thousands of those printed and handed out at visitor's centers throughout the state. Um, and vis- and uh welcome centers along the interstates. And then also it's viewed online by literally hundreds of thousands of people who are looking for information about Blue Ridge communities. Um, and again, I said, I, I won't read all these, but I do want to mention that we, we just went over to a new website where the member directory and the community event calendar is member editable. So you all, because you're a Chamber member, even though there's no charge to the county for being a Chamber member, you can go in and put your own expense on there. And everybody sees that. And we post from that. Um, we advertise from that. And it's really nice new software, so I encourage you to go take a look at that. AlleghenyCountyChamber.com. We have several other domains that forward to that one location. Like we have visit spartanc.com, authentically Allegheny.com. Those all forward to our main Chamber site. All right, um. Again, we do uh ribbon cuttings and open house of many businesses across the county. Geo fencing capabilities that I mentioned before, that allows us and the TDA to really help organizations like the Arts Council determine if they're getting their ma- the bang for their marketing buck. In other words, if they're gonna advertise in Winston-Salem, and they do that, we can go within three days after the event and say, did anybody come from Winston-Salem? Or Charlotte, or wherever it might be. Um, we can, we can reach out as far as uh to set up an event, we can measure things from Virginia and North Carolina and South Carolina. But it will tell us if somebody came from Europe to our Mountain Heritage Festival. So it's really powerful. It tells us their interests, democra- demographics, their age, things like that. Here's another thing that we're doing. I heard about a grant program with the High Council, High Country Council of Governments that uh they were really wanting to help communities reach the less, the underserved for um technology. And I was talking to Debbie Brewer, and she had also heard about the grant. And we decided both to submit for a grant for the, for that to see if we couldn't help. And what Debbie has submitted with the library is to set up Wi-Fi systems throughout the rural areas of our county. It's kind of funny to think, we're all rural, but really there's more rural than, than there is in Sparta. And so we're looking at uh having Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi stations set up at probably five or six locations throughout the county where people can't get to county easily. They can get there, and especially in, in inclement weather or something like that. And in conjunction with that, I submitted for a, a grant to give technology training, whether it's training on smartphones, on Microsoft Office products or whatever, so that when we launch these new Wi-Fi stations, we'll have a training there. We'll probably tent set up. We'll have a special speaker, and we'll have uh food. We'll give them lunch and things like that. And we actually both got our grants approved this morning. So I think the ca- uh library is getting, I want to say fifteen to sixteen thousand um for the Wi-Fi setups, and they're gonna work with Skyline on that. And I'm gonna help because I'm a little more techn- technological than Debbie is. Um, and then I'm gonna provide the training and the food and the, kind of make an event out of each one of those launches. So that's gonna happen starting in July. We've got one year to get all that in place. But it's just another thing we're trying to do for the community. And nobody's asked us to do it. It's not really even business related. It's more just community driven. All right, let's see, um. One thing that uh Mr. Bill mentioned, Bill, our chairman, is that uh I was working with PBS to see if we couldn't um get the Rudel Roadster Tour here in Allegheny County. And, and the way that came about is uh last year we did a lot of advertising with PBS. And uh I happened to come across in all the stuff that they send me, um this Rudel Roadster Tour, and I was, I was looking into it, and it's basically a child, a children's program where they obviously send out cameras and whatnot, but they, they really tried to introduce the community and what that community has to offer to children all over the state. Well, I sent them a letter and they responded that they were interested in it. Uh, last, I guess it was two weeks ago, me and Johnny Wishon met with them via Zoom, and we got approved right there on the spot. Because they want to introduce children across the state to Allegheny culture and heritage. So they're gonna do, they wanted to do it in conjunction with a festival. And so we presented a couple festivals, and they chose the Ag Fair Festival and Carnival um because it's a multi-day event. And they want space, and Johnny's gonna work in to give them a large space. They asked for up to forty by sixty area, but he's not sure he can give them that much. But their investment is that they're going to have twenty-five thousand dollars marketing to promote you know, their presence at the festival, which ultimately promotes our festival. And then they're gonna have about twenty-five thousand dollars in physical representation. You know, staff, they're gonna be staying in hotels and Airbnbs, and uh they'll be tr- doing training and things like that. And that all really just came about because I sent them a letter. So sometimes you just gotta ask, you know? Um. I mentioned that we advertised through PPS last year. We're not doing that so much this year. This year we're, we've entered into a partnership with the Blue Ridge Parkway Association. Um, they're, they're rebranding everything they're doing with their emails and their website. And uh the maps that they give out, that is the most popular handout in any gateway community along the Parkway is the Parkway map, you know, fold dot, I'm sure you've seen it, and it has the different regions um represented. And so we're really kind of promoting along those lines because without a doubt, most of our visitors come here because of the parking. And the good news is that our entire Parkway stretch will be open this year, you know, in phases. Actually, um, the one stretch from twenty-one up to Down Park might be open this afternoon. Just depends on whether they get enough work done with the weather, but it will be in the next couple of days. The unfortunate thing is they're gonna close down the Eighteenth Side a few days after that, because that really needs a lot of work. I don't know if you've all been out there and up to the bluffs, but the road's in bad shape. But the new road is amazing. It's beautiful. And they've re-mortared everything, all the bridges and the, the curbs that were stoned. It looks great. I've seen photos already. So we're looking forward to that. And we're going to, you know, we're gonna play on that, on the Parkway's benefit to our community. And uh, you know, with mentioning that, I was recently made an ambassador for Blue Ridge Rising for our area. And they have, you know, I've been in a couple meetings so far, and it's hard with anybody, government, to get you, give you a solid quote. But th- their goal is to give funding into the gateway communities to help that integration between the Parkway and the gateway communities. And they also are talking about wayfinding signage from the Parkway into our communities. Now, we're, we're working with wayfinding that, the other way, and struggling with the, the DOT to get everything we want there. But this is all just given to us because we're one of the gateway communities. So we'll see how much we can get out of that, but I'm gonna stay very active, make sure that we are, that I'm a voice for Allegheny County and all these other organizations. Um, another thing you may have heard, we just uh did a pitch at Allegheny um event with, in conjunction with the Wilkes Community College Small Business Center. And we had seven contestants, basically they were entrepreneurs, it's had different ideas for businesses. They made their presentation. They had seven minutes to kind of say, this is what we're interested in doing, and we think this is a viable business, and we hope you do. And the winner got twenty-five hundred dollars, second place got a thousand, third place got seven fifty. And it was a great event. We, uh, Muddy Creek donated their hall to have the event and food and things like that. And we had judges, and it was a good time. And we plan on doing that every year. So we'll do that in conjunction with the Small Business Center, Wilkes Community College. Um, and then the following things, I'm talking about the ads that we do. I mean, I don't know if you all are aware of how much advertising we do. I was just doing some rough numbers, and we've done over fifty thousand dollars with advertising in these magazines in the last year. Um, Charlotte Magazine, Arctic Magazine, Western North Carolina Magazine, Carolina Country, Blue Ridge Country, Down the Road Magazine, Surrey Living Magazine, Blue Ridge Digest, Yadkin Valley Magazine, The Blue Ridge Parkway Planner Magazine, Blue Ridge Heritage Craft Magazine, obviously the Allegheny News, and Facebook paid advertising on Instagram. And we, we advertise everything, not just Chamber events. You know, if it's, if it's a big event here for the county, whether it's Music on Main or the Fiddler's Cup Festival, we advertise all of that. Because what benefits those festivals benefits the community, and that fills our mission. On the next page, just to mention a couple of things that I've done. Um, we did the interview with Fox TV, me and Jose, and that went over really well. We got a lot of attention with that. Out, uh, the Chamber does after five events. I don't know if anybody's, I know, I've seen you at uh a couple, and they're really great events. We just did one at uh High Meadows Country Club. And uh you just go out and they introduce to everybody to their facilities. They've done a lot of facility upgrades. There's usually refreshments or um liquid sometimes, and it's a good time. And all of that is free. It's basically, again, we're just trying to help our businesses of our community promote themselves to other members of the community. Um, we do advertise regionally, kind of cross promotionally within our area. A good example is the Blue Ridge Music Center. No funds change hands, but we get a full page ad in their visitors guide, and they get a full page in ours. I mean, and that's, that's good for the whole area. I mean, it, you almost don't even feel like you're crossing a border when you go to Blue Ridge Music Center. It feels like that should be Allegheny County. And uh, uh, other examples are Grayson County. We have good connection and good report with them. The Galax Twin County Visitors Guide gives us good rates on a full page ad in their visitors guide, which is great. It's very affordable. And one of the biggest successes we've had is with the Carroll County Flea Markets, both the Memorial Day and the uh Labor Day. People that go to those also want to come to our festivals, and so it works out really well for us. Blue Ridge Heritage Music videos. We, they still owe us a brochure, and we're waiting for that. But we've got some great videos on our website and are also on the Blue Ridge Heritage website, so people can go and learn about the Allegheny Jubilee and Muddy Creek Music Hall. And our, our wonderful crafts and artisans that are downtown, those are all Blue Ridge Heritage Trails. They have both the music side and craft side. And they're, they're very supportive of Sparta and Allegheny County. Some of you may have seen the Tristar Motorcycle Event that was just at the Allegheny Inn. And this year I got involved in the marketing of it because I just happened to be friends with the guy who's over it. And I said, you know, I think we should go to the TDA and see if we can get some funds and market this better. And he had his biggest year ever. Not just recent, but the biggest year ever with that event. And if you were here on Friday and Saturday around town, you saw there were a lot of interesting characters walking up and down the streets and in and out of the stores. But they loved it. There's been a lot of good feedback from the attendees. And it looks like it's finally gonna be a real, a real event for them. Where it had, it had actually dwindled down to about twenty people attending that until a couple of years ago. So they're really happy with us and we're happy with them. They put, what we call it, they put heads in beds, which is very important to this community. You know, that's a Thursday through a Monday event. I mean, we need more of those.
Do you know how many total people there were?
Well, they only had, they had a hundred and nine registered riders, which typically means they have twice that or more because their families come with them. So the riders go out and the women shop. We saw a lot of women shopping, and there were, there were some kids. It's not a huge kid event, but. They have a big dinner. Mindy Hall spoke at their dinner on Saturday night, so just telling them about Allegheny County. One of our local bands played the music. Let's see, um. I'm sure you heard mention the, about my uh meeting with uh R State Magazine. Actually, I met with six or seven magazines last spring, and R State's the first one to actually come up here and do a story on Allegheny County. So they sent the photographer up a couple of weeks ago, and she's coming back in June to get some better um remote photos around the river and on the Parkway when that area opens more up and is, the foliage is in better. And Bobby's uh, Bobby Ragland's gonna take her back up in the, his cherry picker now that the ba- the flower baskets are starting to come in and grow there. That's gonna be a great story. That's gonna be released in uh May of twenty-six. And it's gonna be called something like Sparta in Spring, Springtime in Sparta. It's a working title. But we're real excited about that. Personally, I, I that just made my day when I heard about it, because I really felt like I wasted my two days meeting with those magazines last year, and I didn't. So it was good to know. Nobody likes to waste their time. Um, another thing that we're working on right now, I'm very involved with the Allegheny Wellness Coalition. I just kind of fell into that, that board because Lisa was involved in it, Lisa Bottomley. And I said, you know, I'll go in and listen and see if we can help in any way. But they were really struggling for um identity and purpose. And we put together what was initially just gonna be a blood drive, and it's blossomed into a full-scale uh health and fitness fair. It's gonna be Friday, June thirteenth. It is during the day. Um, it end up about six o'clock, uh five to six, there'll be a concert to kind of wrap the whole thing up. But there'll be door prizes, and there'll be a pickleball tournament, and there's gonna be a blood drive. All of this came about just because we were talking about doing a blood drive. So it's kind of neat to see. Um, the hospital's gotten involved, a lot of the um, the suicide prevention organization and so on are really involved, and there's gonna be some fitness classes even right down there. This Thursday, we're gonna do a giant ribbon cutting. This is just an idea that uh the consortium I'm in with the other Chamber Directors in the area. Um, we want to spread the word to as many ways as we can that we're open for business. And you know, Allegheny didn't shut down as much as some of these other areas. But the people out there don't necessarily know it. We get calls every day at the visitor's center by saying, are the roads passable? Are your businesses open? Is this open? Is that available? Can we get to there from here and things like that? So obviously, we're not doing a good enough job letting the wo- getting the word out. And people, people down the mountain and especially in the cities are a little bit nervous anyway about rural communities. So we just wanna really make a good presentation. So we're, we're gonna close the street for just a minute and run out in the street with this giant red ribbon we got that's fifty foot long, and we're gonna cut it, and we're gonna send those pictures to everybody who will broadcast. And then I'm definitely not gonna read all these, but this is a list of uh organizations that the Chamber and I am involved with, you know, from the TDA through ASTA, the Parkway Association, Vision Northwest North Carolina Board, which is kind of an economic development board. The Wayfinding Development Committee, KLF, which helps keep the streets clean. Um, one that we're kind of exploring alliance with, um, Bill Shepley and I both attended this WNC Regional Economic Development Collaborative. And we're still not sure whether that's a good fit or not. But you know, we're looking into it to see um if they can help us, you know, with our economic development. And, and as far as the Chamber is involved in economic development, we're not going out and, and trying to uh reach out to businesses. We're just trying to, to make this a very great place to live and work. And then uh that people buy into it. And so any kind of supporting role we can do in that and connections. You know, somebody calls and wants to talk about development here in town, I will listen, and I will talk, and I'll tell them how great places, and then I'll give them Bill Shepley's number, and I'll give them Jose's number, and I'll give them your all's number. Because um sometimes it's just about connection. And then the last page is something that's unfortunate that is included here. So we, we were very involved with uh the after effects of Hurricane Helene. Um, not so much in the infrastructure here as, again, letting the world know that uh we survived the hurricane. And uh, really, I don't know exact numbers, but the fall leaf season is huge for our economy. You know, people traveling up here, spending their money. And uh we like that. Spend your money here and then go back home. And uh we don't normally spend a lot of money actually that time of year to get people to come up to the area because they just do. You know, we, we put up some billboards and a few ads, but that's usually about it. And we really inundated the media uh down the mountain uh to let them know that uh the roads were passable and that our businesses was, were open and they needed them to come. And we felt like um it could have been a lot worse. You know, the effect of the hurricane on our economy. It wasn't great, but I've heard some horror stories from people in my same position across Western North Carolina, so. I mean, I, I, I don't know if anybody's been to Asheville since the hurricane. Besides just the visible damage, it's just amazing you're walking down the streets that are as barren as Sparta is on a Sunday night. I mean, it's just like, where are all the people? So the word isn't out there, and, and we can't do enough right now to really get that word out that uh this is a great place to visit. It's a great place to come and shop, eat, dine, have fun, listen to great music. And uh that's what the Chamber's all about. And certainly, we try to benefit the entire community. We don't want to focus on one area. It's not just about tourism. You know, we met with uh, there's a changeover in the economic development partnership of North Carolina where Bill Slago is retiring, but his replacement is coming in. And when Bill was here, we met with Parkwood, we met with Pioneer Clips, we met with Tri-State Components, we met with NAPCO, Sparta Candle, um Williamson Brewery, Art Meadery. And uh, again, we're just the connecting piece a lot of times between people who need help and people who may be able to bring that help. And so that's really, again, you know, going back to the mission, we just want to improve the quality of life for everyone in our community. And uh, so there it is. There's a lot. And I apologize if it took me a long time. I got a lot to say.
Right, we're good. Anybody got any questions?
Larry? Turn this back on, see what kind of feedback. How many, how many members do you have in the Chamber, paid members?
Well, our membership is down since um COVID, and, and it took another hit with the hurricane because people uh lost money. But we were about two hundred and seventy-four, two hundred and seventy-five right now.
Two?
Two hundred and seventy-four to two hundred and seventy-five.
How much does it cost to be a member?
Well, I mean, that's the one thing I need about Allegheny. We have the lowest rates of any Chamber in the state. Um, for a small business, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, but that is an increase. We uh, after input from you all last year, we raised our rates about twenty-five percent across the board. Um, and so we expected to lose a few members. We were at right about three hundred when we did that. But uh our, our small businesses are a one twenty-five, a larger business can be a two hundred and fifty. Um, real estate, you know, that, the Allegheny Inn, I think, has the highest rate of anything, of any of our businesses.
What, what's your total budget at the Chamber?
Shoot, I don't have that number in front of me, but it's under two hundred thousand.
And out of that, where's, how, how much is raised? Who, who contributes to you to get to that, the town, the county?
All of the above. Our membership is probably a quarter of it. Um, our events, maybe uh ten, fifteen percent of our income. Um, the, the TDA, although a lot of the funding that we get from the TDA is just passed through. We receive the money and then we have to spend it on advertising and promotion, the tourism in the area. Um, so it's not really operational. We get money um in allocations from the town and the county, and that's always been a significant portion of our income.
Do um, you said the TDA, uh, the best I could tell, they give you two different grants, seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, the seventy-five hundred is true operational money from the TDA. And the thirty-two five uh is money I'm supposed to spend on marketing, promotional materials, things like that, and we do.
So from those two organizations, you get about forty thousand?
Right.
Close to it. And then the county, you're, what are they asking for this year?
We, we had asked for forty thousand and it was adjusted down to the one, thirty-eight-five?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight? You sure want thirty-five? I'm just kidding.
I'll look and make sure.
In previous years, we got as much as fifty. Um, and last year was a real hit to us. Um, fortunately, the town didn't cut us last year, but this year they have. They cut us by ten thousand.
How much of an increase is that, eh, percentage wise?
Percentage wise?
She'll figure that out. Do you have a fund balance, Annie?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have, right now it's in the low thirties, because we spent a lot of money on advertising this spring for the events that are coming up. Actually, if I, if I Actually, if I, if I create an ad right now, it's published two to three months away. So I'm doing most of my advertising right now for the summer and the fall.
Is that a restricted or unrestricted fund balance?
Unrestricted.
Unrestricted. April?
It's three point eight times what they were getting, three point eight times what they were getting. So three hundred plus percent.
Going back to when we was giving forty-five, forty-seven-five, as I remember, to fifty thousand, three years back. The authentically Allegheny money. Over two thousand.
So there was, it was forty-seven.
Two years, it was pretty similar and then it dropped over.
Yeah.
Last year, it took a hit.
In twenty-three, it was forty-seven-two. And it's on the board, forty-seven-two-twenty. And then in twenty-four, it went to fifteen. And then twenty-three was forty-seven-two-twenty.
What'd you say the increase, percentage increase was?
Three hundred percent.
Three hundred percent.
Three hundred?
That's on, that's on the major cut that took last year. If you back up a year prior to that.
I don't care about last year.
The numbers changed a lot.
Three hundred percent increase?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, I think it's always important on any of these to look at how it's trending. Like, is it, like, what happened last year was not normal in the funding of this organization. Throughout the years, it was just a sudden massive drop. I think that's more significant than returning to close to what it was before. And I think we gotta look at that. We gotta make sure that we don't just take, you know, we ha- we have to look at the last three or four years. And see, okay, what was happening and then all of a sudden, boom, what happened in this one year? It just got cut dramatically.
The last three or four years has got us out of trouble with the state of what we were doing. And the big push, that period for some of the organizations or cut them down each year a percentage.
But that, the year that thi- this was cut dramatically was not part of that, that sequence that you're talking about. You all had already recovered and all of a sudden it got cut big time. So it was not part of the, the original cut. Last year.
Last year.
Twenty, twenty-four.
It was cut like massively.
What percentage?
The county was already to the good before last year come about on the fund balance.
Right.
Over three hundred percent.
Three hundred?
Yeah, over three hundred.
Over. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I talk a little bit about what was behind my recommendation for this? Just to see if, if that answers some possible questions. So in Grayson County, what, when I got there and I, this is not to be defend anybody back there, so I hope this doesn't come out in this, that way. But I strongly supported the creation of a tourism director position. And that position had a dramatic impact on, on Grayson County. It was one of the things that the citizens felt was one of the most valuable additions that we had. And to fund that salary and the benefits associated with that person is expensive. But it's been very, very effective. That position still exists and continues to, to do more and more in that county. When I came here, without knowing Larry or anything about the history here, my thought was, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to get the board to agree to do the same thing. But what happened is when I met with Larry and, and he and I've had multiple conversations. When I met with Larry, I felt like we had somebody in here that could take that, that role. There was no, not a reason to create another position. But we had a person in place that could actually help achieve those things that I was hoping we could achieve in the tourism arena. So from my perspective, from my, my philosophy that I was trying to bring to the, to the table here, it's not an increase, it's a de- it's a decrease from what I would have recommended. And from the, and you all hired me, I hope partially to have creativity and add creativity to the, to the mix. And, and that would have been one of the things I would have pushed for. I feel like with Larry's philosophy and what he's trying to do and, and the connections that he's made, we don't have to do that. We can, we won't have to put, hire another person. We've got a person right now that can do it. And uh, that was partial, part of my thinking about why I would make this recommendation to increase him back to close to where he was before. And to not come forward with asking you all if we could create a new position. I know that for me personally, being an outside person that, you know, is, is uh, loved coming to Allegheny County for two reasons really, the people and, you know, well, three reasons. The people and the beauty, I guess it's, it's basically two reasons. The people and the beauty of the county and what it has to offer. And I think a major part of what this county has to offer to people is tourism. And I don't want us to, I want us to make sure that doesn't get out of control because I think it can get out of control. And one of the things I heard from Larry right early on is, is awareness of what had gone on in other counties that caused them to grow massively and to lose their character and lose that, the culture that the people had created that made those counties so inviting. And he picked up on that right away and understood there's gotta be uh, control to the, the growth of the tourism industry here. And so all those things combined made me feel confident in saying, let's give this a year. I think this is an experiment. Let's give it a year. Let's refund him back to where he was before and see if he can deliver on the things that he and I have talked about. And can it be a replacement for needing a tourism director? I felt like it, it's worth, I think it's worth the year to give it a shot. And um, oh, and the other thing I wanted to say is, I heard on the radio this morning, Larry, I don't know if you've heard this, but they were talking about the uh, the uh, the state senate is talking about working with the federal government to delay the work that was gonna be done so that the, the Parkway can be reopened in the next couple of weeks completely. Have you heard that update?
We were part of the, the High Country Host Organization that's mentioned here. We're part of that uh, that got together and we wrote a letter to everybody, every politician in the state, basically saying, don't close the Parkway anymore for at least a year because these communities are struggling because of the hurricane. And they just had rebounded from COVID and here, you know, you want to, a, a good example is they were gonna close down the, that Parkway around Grandfather Mountain. And uh, I mean, those communities are, were the hardest hit.
Well, it sounded this morning like it was a decent chance that.
They have decided to delay it.
Oh, they have.
Yeah, they have.
So will that affect what you just talked about earlier about the, that they were still gonna do all this work on the eighteen? Will that still?
Yeah, they're still gonna do the grinding and repaving of eighteen. Okay. But that's, that's not so much, um, you'll still be able to access Downton Park, the campground and the Blues Restaurant, everything like that. They are gonna, what they were gonna do in the Grandfather Mountain Stretch and, and Laurel Fork and all that is close the Parkway completely. And just have some access roads up to some of the major areas. And that wasn't gonna, that wasn't gonna be good for those communities. So that, they did overturn it. They're not gonna close it. Now, they are gonna close our section from down Park, down the Laurel Springs, but I think that's a small hit compared to what it could have been. Um, you know, I, I just wanna say kinda in closing that uh, the chamber's a nonprofit uh, organization that's here to serve the community, to serve our governments and to serve our people. It's, it's never about us. We have no reason to exist if we're not doing the things on the sheet. We don't just need money in our bank. You know, I met with the finance committee on the chamber this morning. And we're like, that money's there to spend towards the community. So you give it to us, it's not gonna be to, to add payroll to, you know, or increases in payroll and everything like that. That's not what we're looking at. We're not looking to succeed as a business. We're looking to succeed as a community, as a community organization. I just wanna make sure that that was understood.
Well, I just wanna say, I think y'all do a good job promoting Allegheny County. And I've always said, I don't care what you got. If people don't know you got it, you ain't gonna get nowhere. I remember a time that uh, you, they had some billboards on seventy-seven?
Yeah, we'll have some again this year.
I think that's, I think that's good myself. I mean, you gotta get your word out, what you've got, what you're offering.
Actually, the um, the first billboard, two billboards went up this weekend.
Good.
For Allegheny and Sparta.
Well, when you look at our budget and they're at thirty-eight thousand this year.
That's what the recommendation is, yes.
And I'm good with that, but we was at forty-seven-two. And if you back that graph to uh, about twenty-eighteen or nineteen or twenty, it was at forty-seven. Let's see, in twenty-twenty, it was at forty-seven-two. And it stayed that, it stayed that till twenty-twenty-four, whenever it took a cut. No, year before that. But so we're not back to where we was at thirty-eight thousand is what I'm saying. And I think they do a good job of promoting Allegheny County. I mean, there's some stuff right here that he just read. BBS, Our State Magazine, that's never been here. And if it hadn't have been for Larry, it wouldn't have been here this time. But I just think they do a good job of promoting our county and working for our county. And we support them minimal when you look at surrounding counties, what they put in our Chamber of Commerce. Tim, you give anything?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One was uh, you said it was, you thought you might have took a hit on some of the membership that when y'all raised that last year? Do you know that for a fact or they just?
Well, yeah, we were at three oh-one when we instituted the rate increase and now we're two, in the two-seventies. We've added a few memberships though, since then. So we got down as low as two sixty-nine, I think.
Right.
And now we're back in the mid-two-seventies.
So other thing was just, uh, it's a little bit off, but what is the uh, this geofencing software stuff is intriguing to me. Is that a pretty expensive?
Yeah, the TDA funded that entirely. Um, it, we did a kind of, is this being recorded? We entered into contract with the company, but they, they told us this, so it's okay. Where if we had an organization that funded it, so the chamber ended into, into the contract. But if we had an organization that funded it and that organization decided that it wasn't worth it and cut our funding, they would let us out of the contract. So by entering a three-year contract, we got the rate at fifty percent off what normally would cost. So it's very good valuable information for the TDA really more than anybody. So then when these people are coming for these grants and, and whatnot, that they can say, yeah, you really did have, um, like the numbers were kind of elevated compared to what they actually were for um, the Apple Pie Festival last few years. You know, there's, there's plus or minus, but it's pretty accurate within ninety percentile. So it's gonna help the, the TDA and we figured we would use it for one or two years and, and really know where's the best place to market. One of the things we found out real fast was that we have really good success marketing to Raleigh-Durham and Charlotte. We expected to find out that we had good success with Winston-Salem, but we don't have it so much. So it, it's just, it, some good information out there.
Yeah, um, I think too, to reference back to the last many years of the funding stuff, I think, and I, I like what you're talking about, the uh, trying to advertise what we have here. I, in other words, trying to get the word out so people know out around their region and everything. I think they might've got off track in the past and maybe getting involved in what they called economic development. And that was not really the job of the chamber. And I think that was what uh, some of the funding was. I think because I had some meetings before I ever become commissioner and they were talking about the economic development part. And I don't think that's ever been a chamber's job.
No, we're really more of a connector when it comes to economic development than a creator of economic development.
So I like everything I see and I like what, the way you've approached it since you became the director. I mean, all this stuff, it's like you say, if you don't try, you don't ask, you're never gonna know. You know, whether there's a grant or whether there's an opportunity to make another connection. And I know, like you said, you real, you realize that it takes a little more time than you, than you really thought it does, did. But we do appreciate what the efforts that you're making and everything. So I've always said, since I've been a, became a commissioner, that the chamber was a very important part of our county, how far that goes of funding and everything, everybody can agree or disagree of how far that needs to go. But the point is, like you said, you're not trying to make money. And as long as I see that, that the chamber is doing what the things that you're talking about, then, you know, I'm, I'm good with supporting that. So I, I mean, I, I don't know what else I could ask the chamber to do, to be honest with you. I think y'all do a great job.
Thank you. That's it. We try.
Just, just looking back on April, got it pulled up by twenty-twenty-one, your actual from county was fifty thousand. And that stayed that within five hundred dollars up until twenty-twenty.
Yeah. And then it goes to, it goes to a different section of the budget. Then it went to the
But buying power, you got less money, less buying power to pay you fifty thousand than you, or at thirty-eight that you did back then. Cause everything's went up so much, you know?
Yeah, and the town cut us as well this year, which was not entirely unexpected. But having a, a county commissioner um, that were willing to, to stick with us and help us to grow the business really, you know, I, I walk up and down the street all the time and I go into these stores. And sometimes they have good days and sometimes they have bad days. And I, I've gotta identify the trends as well. What are we doing that's working? You know, the getting, getting people to spend money. These are, these are our friends, you know, that are artists and, and shop owners and uh, you know, gas station owners and things like that. And they need people to come through the county. And like, uh, like you said, Bill, they, they won't come just because it's here. And you know, you were talking about Grayson County, you know, I appreciated when the, the tourism push was put on Grayson County because it felt a little bit like we feel here sometimes is that we're ignored and, and invisible. And that's why I'm involved in all these organizations and boards and go to all these meetings is I don't want to. But somebody has to speak up for Allegheny County. And I will do that.
We all do these jobs we've got. It ain't for the money. It's because we love the county and you won't see it make progress. I don't want back up thirty years. I wanna move forward, you know? Keep moving along, but you guys do a good job.
Well, I confess, I love my job, but I love it because I feel like I can do it. When I started, I wasn't sure, you know, but now I feel like I can make a difference and that's what it's all about. I mean, you can't ask for more than that out of a job.
Any more questions, Bob? Any more questions?
No.
Please, anybody?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
I got stuff to do.
I also wanna point out that Rita Miller wrote a letter. She's actually on vacation this week. But she wrote a letter with a couple of concerns about the revale expenses coming up for next year.
About what?
Revale expenses. Um, sh- she, she points out postage, the printing budget. Continuing ed and travel is one of her concerns also, just for succession planning. But I wanted to provide a copy of that letter for you.
What was the three things, continuing education and travel?
Postage is the first one. Um, yeah, the postage budget. And this is just gonna go back to, you know, the reason for my increased request is revaluation mailings. And some are required by general statute is what she respectfully, respectfully asked for. The printing budget, revaluation. The printing budget, revaluation mailings. And then continuing education for the tax and the tag office. We did go back and that was part of the cuts and we took out the three percent.
So the tax office brings in all of our money or the biggest part of.
The biggest, the majority of it is.
They gotta be able to communicate with people in the public. They've got to send out mailings and this reevaluation. I would recommend that we approve Reader's Request for the Increase. I don't see that we've got any choice.
I agree.
What's the totals of all of it?
It's like forty five hundred, forty five hundred?
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Forty five hundred, forty five.
But I will also say in her budget, um, I did remind the board of this, there's a, there's a transfer in the tax office budget that we'll have to take care of that goes to that savings account for the revale. You know, we have a separate account. It's not a separate bank account, just a separate fund that's set up. And each year the county puts money into that fund to fund revaluation.
It's an escrow.
Yeah, basically. And that's a general statute requirement also. And I think there was two thousand that was reduced in that line. Because there was nowhere else to take it from in Rita's budget.
I just don't see we have any choice.
Yeah, I agree. I agree too. Don't we need to do this on the next meeting night too? You're on the agenda, we can't do the work session, Timmy?
Well, we, this is why we have the work session to talk through some of these budgets.
Pass on this.
No, no, we're just making the recommend, the change, recommended changes.
You're just giving me direction as your finance officer and giving your budget officer direction as to where we need to go from here.
Yeah, I think we need to do that. We got to do that. Are we done for today?
Well, I think one of the major questions from today, I'm gonna explain.
I've got two or three.
Okay, do you want me to go ahead?
Yes, one.
Okay. So there was an email sent last week about the hundred and eighty five thousand that I had. I had it incorporated in our revenues, basically. So this is when we presented the budget to the board about a month ago and you got your packets. This is what you saw on the revenue side. In this line, the ten, three ninety seven, oh, 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 one, there was an admin general and there was a tax adjustment of one cent. And that's basically what we anticipated that tax adjustment would be. At the end of the meeting, the last budget work session meeting, the board had a consensus and gave me direction to take that out. That's what I did. But the only thing I did with that, and I'm gonna bring up the other spreadsheet, that's, that's what you were presented. Okay, if you look at this one, that one eighty five is gone. But that fund balance appropriation is a different number. That's a smaller number. So there was discussion about saving for the transfer facility. There was discussion about maybe putting some more in for ball fields. But there was no numbers put out there, we're, we're actually gonna do this or we're actually gonna do that. So, and I do want to explain that we are using part of the fund balance to balance this budget as it is. So if we go back and you want, we had thirty thousand of adjustments that were taken out of that hundred and eighty five. So you, basically it's a hundred and fifty five is what we're talking about. If you want part of the hundred and fifty five or all of it put on the expenditure side, back in for something, it's gonna raise your total budget, your total balance budget by that hundred and fifty five. So I just want everybody to understand that. Also, you know, the board has already allocated a million and a half dollars to the high school. And we have a million dollar payment per year for the next ten years for the high school. That line that you see now is a half a million dollars of fund balance appropriated. So that's two million dollars that is gonna be gone out of our fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. So I just want to remind everybody of that. You give me the direction and the budget officer the direction and you do have a total of a hundred and seventy three thousand that's set aside for the ball fields for the help of planning and stuff, but there's no plan now. Um, you did talk with Mr. Spicer about the transfer facility and, you know, the plant, they're getting that nailed down to have what the final plan's gonna be and to put it out for bid, but we don't know that yet.
It's a lot of assumptions, ghosts.
It is true. We haven't really had anything out of state either.
We have not.
Big yes. Out of what? State grant money.
Yeah, if we get any other skip funding or whatever comes out.
So, so if we left the one cent in it and with our discussions, the last, uh, work session, how much money was we having to try to come up with? Do you remember? Like people would ask and what would?
From the last work session?
Yeah.
Well, we found sixteen thousand in a budget that we used for part of it. Let me get my notes. We find my notes.
It was the twenty four and the six.
We had twenty four and a six request.
At the end of the day, we were looking for thirty thousand.
So we need to define thirty thousand.
Right.
Leaving the budget, recommended budget the way it was.
Yes, and what I did was take that thirty thousand out of that cent. Right. So that brought it down to the one fifty five. So you're really talking about a hundred and fifty five if you wanna put that expenditure back in there. But, but it's gonna, we're gonna have to balance the budget on both sides, if that makes sense.
You, you were talking about the parks and recreation, the hundred and seventy some thousand. Does that include the Beamer money?
Yes, that would be the Beamer money and you added seventy five thousand to that budget to go toward ball, ball field planning.
That's all the Beamer money, correct?
That is all of it.
That wipes it out.
Yeah, that's the last of it.
Now, right. I look at the benefit of the money that we've spent. I would like to see at least someplace in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand going to parks and recreation to start on these ball fields. I mean, that's, I'd like to see it all go there, but I don't want to be bigish about it, but I'd look at the number of, of children plus the number of parents. That ball field's not gonna happen this year. We'd be lucky for it to be ready for next spring. We need to get started on it during the fall and early spring. And a hundred and seventy five thousand is not gonna touch it. Now, if we can put in there a hundred thousand plus, I think that gives us a good start on providing service. We've been without a swimming pool for, I guess, going on six or seven years. And we're not gonna have a swimming pool in the next two or three years at the best. We need to do something for these young people and their families to stop them from having to travel to Wilkes, Surrey County to play ball or even be able to practice.
But we also need to have a safe facility for our employees at the transfer facility.
Oh, yeah. But I'm just talking about one thing at a time.
Yeah.
I think we, you're asking for some direction.
Yeah, yeah, I'm asking for direction.
So we're going, I'm going to try to go step by step.
Yeah.
My, my first step is the, uh, the recreation for these young people that have had, uh, I hate to use the word suffer, but that's about what they had to do over the last several, several years, especially since losing the swimming pool and COVID.
Well, the ball, to me, the ball field, I agree with Bobby, the, the kids, we need to help them, but the ball field, once it's in place and the right kind of ball fields, three or four of them, concession stand and bathroom. People bring a lot of money into this county like it does Grayston and Ash and some of these others. Where they have all these traveling clothes, a common thing. It could be someone for money making. Do you? It is, it is for other counties if it's done in the right way.
So this money, if you, if you did put it, because you said, it sounds like you're gonna have to put an expenditure line or you're just putting it in this?
Yeah, what'll happen, and I, I confirm this with the auditors because the transfer facility specifically, that's an enterprise fund. And that's the most regulated fund that we have within the county. So what would happen is we need to put an expenditure line for a transfer at the end of the year or sometime during the year that would go to the transfer facility specifically for capital improvements. So we, we, we have the ability to do that. And that would kind of, it would almost be like a savings account and we know that we're not gonna touch that expenditure and it's going to the transfer facility.
We can borrow money from the county to help with that, with the transfer station on down the road.
There, there's several ways that we can do that. Once we know the plan and they've put out the RFP and we have the bids and we know what it's gonna cost us, there's several options there. Plus, we're gonna have a grant writer on staff by the time we get that plan and that bid too. So that should help.
So, and the way I look at it, far as the responsibility, before the first ground's broken up at the baseball fields, we need to be doing something serious on the transfer station. So it has to be first.
That's how I feel.
And then the other thing I, a question I had, so if you put like, if we did, you know, even not this year, but whenever we start putting money in a, a fund for recreation, even though it's, it has a line for recreation, I know the Beamer has to be spent.
Yeah.
But could other later down the road commissioner make a decision? They want to use that money for something else. I love that line, other than the Beamer fund.
You mean like set up another fund, maybe kind of like our revale escrow fund?
Yeah.
Set it up for recreation.
Yeah, so.
Future planning or something like that. We.
Yeah, and that way, nobody, it couldn't be used for anything else.
We could do that.
Yeah, because if you leave it wide open, run short of money somewhere, like, well, we could probably pull it somewhere from there.
Yeah.
But I know there is stuff like Beamer. It has to be done for recreation.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's the way I think the, the transfer station is gonna have to be dealt with pretty seriously.
And you know, that, that transfer station is,
Yeah, it's.
It, it stays on my mind every day. I think, I think about it every day. And about making sure we do something to keep those folks safe and.
If we're not careful, if that thing blows up in our face
Yeah.
and we have to shut it down for a week, that's not gonna be good.
Yeah. It's not as, it's not as glitzy or, or, you know, as the ball fields, but I agree with you all, the ball fields is an economic development. It can be a great economic development, um, tool and great, just more importantly, great for our kids.
And it would be great if we could do it simultaneously.
Yes.
Sort of together.
Yes.
But we have to be responsible how we do that.
Right.
Timmy, have you been in contact with, with Central High School?
Haven't talked to Ray Pickett in probably a couple of months.
So I'm going, I'm going to Raleigh.
I talked to Ray about
June the tenth for three days, didn't I?
There's no one.
You gonna go to where?
I'm going to Raleigh, Raleigh, June the tenth for like three days to talk with our legislators. Uh, there's a, the whole state people that have my job in the,
Yeah.
in the state are, are descending on Raleigh to talk to their.
And that'd be an opportunity, you can talk to both for representatives.
Yeah.
But I figured Ray usually calls if he sees some good. I figure no news might not be great news in this case. But he said it was all focused around recovery stuff, like from a link.
Okay.
And there were really, there wasn't gonna be a lot of special projects, monies. And if you could, if you could tie it back to something that happened during a storm and he, he's the one that said, you know, send us pictures, documentation, if we had any damage to this facility. So that was our only hope and it really based down to how they slice the pie, I guess.
Yeah.
But they do not have as much surplus this year either.
I'd just like to say that I make two trips, I don't know why, to the trash dump every week. That place is, there is not, I bet you five minutes that there's not two or three vehicles unloading. And about two or three months ago, we had a little accident where broke a few tubefors. That place was shut down for about five hours and it was one heck of a mess. If we'd lost that ability to dump trash for two days, I don't know what it would do.
Yeah.
It would cost us an absolute fortune just to get around that. And then you gotta build it, come back and fix whatever happened. And it was about five years ago, for some reason, that back wall cracked. I don't remember if somebody bumped it or, but it's now it's held up with rebarb and pieces of steel to keep it from collapsing even more. But my, talking about the Ray Pickett, my last big conversation about the transfer and about the activity fields, he, he wouldn't put any hope in the activity fields. He would say if something happened to the transfer station, that would be a different story. But nothing's guaranteed and the budget won't be done till September or October or November.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, I'll just go back to, to what we're looking at nationally about people being so obese, children being obese, playing these video games in the computers. They need to be outside. If they're not gonna be working, at least they can be playing baseball or softball or soccer or something. And doing something instead of just sitting around coming potato couches. So that's us. I, I'm glad to see Bill tell me that we can do some more for the, uh, athletic fields. And my, my other thing is, and then I'm finished is, I would like to see that pay raise to the county commissioners. Have that go to the parks and recreation too. I think that's more than, more important than giving us a, a raise. I didn't run for this job for the money. I ran for help the people of the county. And that, you know, that amount of money, twenty thousand is, uh, that goes a big way in a dugout or getting some fencing put up on these events. So I'm finished then.
So, I mean, we've talked around about this, so what do we do with the, I mean, where do we need to go with what April's asking us about this?
Well, I just wanted to explain
How it's done.
how it was taken out. And there wasn't, I went back and listened to the meeting
Yeah.
just to make sure I didn't misunderstand anything. There wasn't like a clear, we're gonna do this or we're gonna do that.
Right.
It was, you know, let's take this and we're gonna do, take care of these shortfalls. There was thirty thousand when we left. I have taken care of that. Um, but there was kind of a general discussion between everybody. Um, y'all had a discussion with David about the transfer facility, but there wasn't any, anything solid in direction.
So I guess you're asking us what, 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 what we want you to do now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where you, where do you want me to go with this budget?
I think you're, you're looking for some numbers, aren't you?
Yes, or, um, you know, our discussion has been, we're gonna, I believe we're gonna end on the positive at the end of this fiscal year. So that fund balance that we have plugged in there right now to balance this budget as it is may be taken care of this year. I mean, it, so that's gonna give us hopefully another four or five hundred thousand to do something with, but we really won't know that.
Designate it now.
Right.
Wait until later.
Right.
Because we really don't know what we're designating it for specifics.
Correct. Correct, because we don't have those plans yet. That, that's my opinion and I.
Well, even the ball fields, you know, I don't know what the next steps are, but we don't have any clue on that either.
No, because the land that, that they were talking about isn't gonna work, because it's more of a wetland. It's, it doesn't perk and, and there's a couple of other issues.
So, I don't know that, I've done it since, or it's been done since I've been commissioner. So what is the process if you get through in the middle of a budget year and things start coming together to do a project, start a project? What do you do with your, you have a, you know, you have a signed budget for the whole total year? You just have to figure out if there needs to be, we dig into fund balance or we try to borrow money, we figure it out then, correct?
Figure it out, yes, yes. But we can do a budget amendment after July one, yeah, that's what, that's what the budget amendments.
Yeah, and sometimes, you know, opportunities that you don't even think about.
Right.
May arise and you may say, you know, we need to take, this is something that we need to jump on right now. I don't foresee that happening, but, um, if that happens, then you go, you can go back in and say, okay, this is a, now become a higher priority than something we budgeted for.
Right.
You can take, you can, you know, as long as you do a budget amendment, you can transfer it.
So I think, instead of complicating any words, I think you need to leave it like this, like what you've got it balanced there.
That would be my recommendation at this point.
And then deal with this other stuff down the road. Uh, speaking of that transfer station too, and I remember in our conversation with T R C.
Yes.
The last time we talked to them, that they lifted like there's grants that they deal with all the time that help with these things. So they may be able to direct you, like when you do the rent grant writing.
Yeah.
There may be some money somewheres that's connected to that that might be available. That'd be one of those things that you just have to dig for it, I guess.
And there's part of grants out there for parks and recreation. There's a lot of that out there also.
Yeah, and that's what, that's a good point. I think that one of the things that that grant writer can do is, is.
Look for those.
Help us with recreation and help consolidate the process moving forward, you know? What is the process and where do we get the money? And when do we think the money can start to be spent and what's it gonna be spent on?
Right.
So that there is a, a, a multi-step plan for the parks.
April, how, how have our sales tax money coming in? How is they done against what we budgeted for? Are they lower or are they a little bit higher?
No, they're higher than what we budget, but.
So.
When we look at those revenues, we don't, we don't go ten percent higher. We usually go a little bit lower, because you don't know how that's gonna fluctuate once, you know? And you don't wanna overestimate the revenues, because that's what's really defining your budget is the revenue.
Right, and it's projected.
That always gives us a little bit of a leeway.
Yes.
Historically.
Historically.
You can't predict the future.
That's right.
But historically, we've always had a little bit more come in than we anticipated.
We have the past five years, because that's, I mean, that's the way we've been doing the budget the past five years. And I think all, all three of you have been involved in that.
Stay on the love side.
Yeah.
You're in good shape.
Yeah.
And Timmy said leave the lucky buzz, but is that including using the hundred thousand for the ball fields that Bobby and I talked about?
No.
It's not designated.
It's not designated.
Well, I think we need to designate. I think we need to designate.
The what?
What you just talked about, the hundred thousand, I'll do one fifty-five.
I'd like to do one fifty-five for the ball field. And then give us a cushion on the twenty thousand dollars on the, uh, on the commissioner's pay increase.
Yeah, we hate a man to go with a hundred thousand and fifty-five for the, uh.
We got thirty-five.
What the question is, do we wanna, Timmy says leave it alone, right?
Yeah.
Like it is, and I was saying, let's designate it.
I say designated.
Fifty-five at the time being.
Just fifty-five?
No, a hundred for the ball fields, fifty-five for the landfill, and then later with the money you're talking about.
Okay, then you're gonna be, you're gonna be using six hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars of your fund balance on top of the million and a half that's already been used.
Right.
I just want everybody to understand that.
So we're in good shape right there.
I think so.
Yeah. You're good shape, but with a lot less fund balance.
It's a lot less fund balance, you gotta, you gotta be your budget. So that state stabilization is, and we've ta- taken on more debt. So when the state comes back, instead, instead of the fund balance being sixty-three, twenty-six, three and sixty-four percent, you may see it go to fifty. Uh, I just want everybody to understand that. He, he understands, because we've had multiple conversations.
Many times, yeah.
I, I've got some faith in this grant writer. Um, I really hope that that's gonna pay off.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll try it for a year or two years and if it, you know, there's all sorts of grants out there.
Really are.
We've never had a professional person.
You're right.
Person.
Yeah.
Apply.
And I'll tell you, when Gay, Galax brought a person in that like, just, I mean, she was highly, highly successful. All the counties around there were envious of the, the situation that was happening there. So we gotta get a great one.
So you was talking about Grayson County, did, did they not have a chamber of commerce? Like when you came in and recommended a tourist.
The, the problem there was that the chamber of commerce was shared between Carroll County and, and Galax and, and Grayson, so.
Oh, so.
And so where the population was, is where the people wanted to go. They wanted to come to us for the mountain part.
Right.
But they, when it came to, uh, businesses and, and they, it was kind of a more of an attraction to go to Galax or go to, to Carroll County.
Isn't there a way to fund the chamber through the T D A? A percentage of T D A every year? Isn't that how Ash County does it?
That, our T D A here in Allegheny funds the chamber, I believe it's thirty-two-five. I can tell you, because we have access to the budget. Yeah, thirty-two-five goes directly to the chamber. And then they have other things set aside for marketing. Like they've got seventy-five hundred set aside in just marketing grants for the chamber. But also the T D A, they set aside money for like the Blue Ridge Parkway. That was probably a T D A funded marketing venture. But the chamber's handling it. But yes, they do get thirty-two-five.
But what I'm saying about the T D A, they get, I don't know what we get, what, five percent or something?
Six percent, isn't it?
It's six percent, the tax is actually six percent, yes.
So, but I understand that Ash County gives them, I don't know what the exact figure is, but just say two percent of the T D A money that comes in. And that's how Ash funds the, uh, chamber. It doesn't come back through the county every month, every year. Plus, they've got the big businesses up there that, you know, General Electric and all of those that are big sponsors.
But what would be their two percent, what their total take is, is a huge number.
Yeah, it's three percent actually.
Yeah.
They give them three percent, whether it's, whether it's lower or higher, that's all T D A, that's all.
The chamber gets. And Ash County.
So I contacted the, um, uh, North Carolina School of Business to try to see if I could get some information on what counties pay for the chamber. They said we needed to reach out to the, there's a, they have a finance, what did they, what did they tell you it was called?
Finance listserv.
It's like a listserv of people that have April's jobs in the counties all, all throughout North Carolina. And they said the best thing to do would be to send a note out to that listserv and we would get probably ten or, ten or fifteen that would tell us how they're funding their chamber. And it would give us some percentage compared to the population, but, you know, we could ask in that message, do you use some formula, you know, and, uh, so as we're drafting it, April, let's make sure we put that in there too, so we can come back to you all and tell you some information about.
I think in the past, the formula that we used was based on population.
Okay.
And it was around two dollars and thirty-four cents or something per.
Do you know, do you know where that two thirty-four came from?
No, but I mean, that, that was what the old manager, that was, he came out of Virginia. I don't know if it was a Virginia formula or.
Okay.
But I know that was, that was his mindset was based on population.
Okay.
I know some counties don't give any money, but they probably have these big factories.
Or they have like a tourist, tourism director, you know, and they put the money in there.
And it could come from their T D A.
Yeah.
Could be set aside.
Yeah.
For the chamber.
Sure could. Well, in, in thinking back about what April said about using some of the fund balance, I don't know what better we can spend it for than our kids. I mean, that's what we all work every day for is our, to help our kids in better education and the whole, and the whole thing. I mean, I think it's for a day gone good cause, and I'm not saying the landfill ain't a good cause either now. We gotta work on the landfill, the facility over, that's for sure. But I just think it's good, bunny well spent myself to, to try to do the ball fields. I mean, that ain't gonna leave us in no bad shape. We're a long ways from twelve.
Okay, so we need to tell April something? I say a hundred and twenty thousand to Parks and Recreation. After this month.
I already plugged in a hundred and fifty-five.
Did you hear that? She said she already plugged in a hundred and fifty-five for.
Okay, uh, forget what I just said.
That's two hundred and thirty thousand in the recreation budget. And then plus the ninety-eight that's left in the Beamer fund. So that's gonna be over three hundred thousand dollars.
And that includes Beamer?
The three hundred thousand, yes, includes Beamer, yes.
Uh, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, right?
Two hundred and thirty thousand in the recreation budget.
And ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Three twenty-eight.
Three twenty-eight, three sixty-four, exactly.
Oh, this way we brought four to.
Yeah, but it needs to be, she needs to have it fixed by the next June meeting. And really, you was wanting to try to see if we could do the here and then, then?
Yeah, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that.
Cause it's gonna take too long now.
Yeah.
Good.
So that was my next question, um, what if we did a separate public hearing, like one evening next week? Have the public hearing and I can have the budget ordinance ready and I, I believe we can do all of it when we're not. I know we can, yeah.
I am gonna be out of town starting next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
How long, like for the rest of the week?
I'll be back to work on Monday, so I'll rest the week, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
What time do we usually do it? Five or six?
Something like that, yeah.
What about next Monday? Let me give you time.
Yeah.
The following Monday?
Yeah.
Like the ninth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This Monday?
Unless they cancel my flight, I don't know. I'll come back.
This Monday as well.
Well, this Monday's a regular meeting.
Or a regular meeting.
Yeah, we had the regular meeting. And I was hoping we could do it all, like have the public hearing before and then the regular meeting and have the budget ordinance, um, prepared.
But this is backed it up.
I, yeah, we're not gonna have enough time to do that.
The following Monday? So you're looking at the ninth?
The ninth.
The ninth, Jim. The following Monday. And what's the rule about the public hearing time? Like what time?
They like to see in the evenings, like past five o'clock.
Okay.
So anybody working would have time to get, cause, so you could even do it at five-thirty. The public hearing, you can do it five-thirty on the ninth.
Let's give people plenty of time to get.
Yeah, five-thirty is fine.
Yeah.
Okay, June the ninth?
That still gives me time to get back home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another day.
Like five o'clock maybe? No?
Yeah, five-thirty.
Can't do five.
Yeah, I can do five, but I, didn't they say five-thirty?
Yeah. Give your people time to sort of.
I'm good with five or five.
You think half an hour's all, all that's need? You say five?
Five o'clock?
I say five-thirty.
Five or five-thirty, it's up to you.
She's gotta have time, be sure she gets everything.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty's good.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn this little work session.
Five-thirty, June the ninth, public hearing budget.
Yep.
Thank you all. Thank you.